Let us stand for our opening prayer.
Opening prayer. Almighty God, you are our creator and our sustainer. You are our wisdom and our strength. We ask for your guiding hand to lead us through this meeting. May we approach our task with wisdom and confidence and may we approach our colleagues with understanding and respect. We are gonna create an environment of cooperation and kindness. Thank you for helping us to accomplish our work today and we ask all these things in your powerful name through your son, Amen.
Morning everyone. At this point, we have the roll call and approval of the minutes of the committee meeting.
Mr. Chair, I move that we dispense the calling of the roll and the approval of the minutes of the previous committee meeting.
Upon the motion, the calling of the roll, of the approval, of the minutes of the previous committee meeting is dispensed with. At this point, we'd like to recognize our resource persons and the presence of our members. We'd like to thank the presence of Honorable Lodi Odi Tariela from Occidental Mindoro Long District. We'd like to recognize also our several resource person. The chair would like the committee secretary to do the honors.
Good morning Chair, honorable members of the committee and guests. In attendance for today's meeting are the following: From the Department of Health, Ms. Loida Eloida Flores. Morning ma'am. From the Philippine Nurses Association, Dr. Gloria Yang, good morning ma'am, and the party. From the Public Services Labor Independent Corporation, Confederation rather, or PSBL, Ms. Gillian Roque. From the Philippine Public Health Association, Mr. Juliito Paul. Morning sir. From the Nursing Services Philippine, the Philippine Heart Center, Dr. Chrisel Galang. Morning ma'am. We also have in attendance as resource persons for our local hospital bills, your honor. From the Department of Health, Dr. Between Reyes. Also, from the Philippine Institute of Traditional and Alternative Healthcare, or PTA, Dr. Maria Teresa Inigo. Morning ma'am. From the Philippine Health Insurance Corporation, or Philhealth, Dr. Lambert David. Morning sir. From the Professional Regulation Commission, Dr. Joanna Remo. And Dr. Codensio Santa Lucia Junior. That would be all for now, your honor.
Thank you, comsec. Good morning, everyone. In the agenda of the committee meeting today are five bills establishing health facilities which shall cater to the medical needs of Filipinos in strategic locations in the country. Furthermore, we shall discuss House Bill 1978, which promotes the rights and welfare of nurses by regulating and limiting their consecutive work hours. The Philippines is known across the world of our very skilled and hardworking nurses and other medical professionals. Though most of them were forced by circumstance to leave the country and work abroad, it is incumbent on us to ensure the well-being of those nurses who chose to stay in the country and serve our fellow Filipinos and moreover, for the future generation of nurses. In this regard, the said house measures shall prohibit excessive work hours for nurses, subject to some exemptions, and allow them to refuse overtime without retribution. Beyond wages and material benefits, this is but a fitting retribution for the selfless service of our health workers. Lastly, the committee shall deliberate on and approve the unnumbered substitute bill on strengthening the traditional and complementary medicine system. Republic Act Number 8423, or the Traditional and Alternative Medicine Act of 1997 has been in effect for almost thirty years. And now, we are welcoming the changes and innovations that shall provide Filipinos with a wider range of services and products that are affordable and easily available, but still safe, efficient, and effective. Now we move on to the deliberation on a local bill. So on hand, we have House Bill Number 1743 entitled an Act Establishing in the Municipality of Paluan, Province of Occidental Mindoro, a Level 2 Hospital to be known as the Paluan Medical Center and Appropriating Funds Therefore. Another bill of the same nature, House Bill Number 1744, an Act Establishing in the Municipality of Blook, Province of Occidental Mindoro, a Level 2 Hospital to be known as the Lubang Island Medical Center and Appropriating Funds Therefore. House Bill Number 1745, an Act Establishing in the Municipality of San Jose, Province of Occidental Mindoro, a tertiary hospital to be known as the San Jose General Hospital and Appropriating Funds Therefore. House Bill 1746, an Act Establishing in the Municipality of Santa Cruz, Province of Occidental Mindoro, a tertiary hospital to be known as the Santa Cruz General Hospital and Appropriating Funds Therefore. And lastly, House Bill 1747, an Act Establishing in the Municipality of Sablian, Province of Occidental Mindoro, a tertiary hospital to be known as the Sablian Medical Center and Appropriating Funds Therefore. All authored by Representative Lodi Odi Tariela. May I call the author of his sponsorship remarks for all the measures? After this, the chair shall call on Department of Health for its position for all the bills.
Thank you. Hello, hello. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Morning again, everyone. So first, let me thank the committee on health led by our chairperson, Congressman Siriap Okato, of course, and my good friend Congressman Alan Peter Miguel for taking time to deliberate five House Bill filed by district presentation. So, Mr. Chair, my dear colleagues, before us today are five House Bill seeking to upgrade hospitals in the five municipalities in the province of Occidental Mindoro, named the Sablian, Santa Cruz, Lubang Island, Paluan, and the biggest and most populous municipality of San Jose. So during the 2020 census, Occidental Mindoro has recorded a population of more than 600,000 inhabitants. We have eleven municipalities, two of which are island municipalities. We have a total land area of 5,866 square kilometers. That is nine times the size of Metro Manila. Servicing this population are three Level 1 Hospitals, namely Occidental Mindoro Provincial Hospital, San Jose District Hospital, and the San Sebastian District Hospital. The other six health facilities, both public and private, while named hospital, are just classified as infirmaries by the Department of Health. So the total present bed capacity for Occidental Mindoro is just 273, or a ratio of 1,924 people per bed. Occidental Mindoro has no Level 2 Hospital, both public and private. So as a result, patients need of advance, yung kailangan niyong advance and the critical care are transported to hospitals in nearby provinces of Oriental Mindoro, particularly in Calapan. In Calabarzon region, in the specialty hospitals in Metro Manila, like the Philippine Heart Center, Dr. Galang. Alam mo, suki ang mga taga-Mindoro sa heart center, no? Salamat sa inyong suporta. Dahil sa kakulangan ng mga hospital at mga espesyalista, ang ating mga gamitan at mga gamot, marami sa aking mga kababayan ang kinakailangan pang pumunta sa mga pribadong hospital sa mga karating probinsya. Marami rin ang napipilitang pumasok sa mga pribadong hospital, kung saan mas mataas ang singil. Kasi dun lang may pasibilidad at mga espesyalista. Dahil dito, Mr. Chair, malaki ang ginagastos ng mga pasyente para sa pagpapagamot. Ang aming mga kababayan na karamihan ay magsasaka at manghingista ay kinakailangan pang magsanla ng mga lupain, magbenta ng ari-arian, o di kayay mangutang para mabayaran ang mga bill sa hospital. Mabuti na lang po at mayron tayong MAI program or medical assistance for indigent patients para kahit pa paano ay makakatulong kami sa pagbabayad ng kanilang mga hospital bill. So to give you an idea, our situation, your honor, this office, just from January this year, has already issued guarantee letters under the MAI program amounting to more than 50 million pesos for more than 1,300 patients from Occidental Mindoro. So since 2022, we have a total of more than 150 million worth of financial assistance under the MAI program for more than 3,000 patients from Occidental Mindoro. This number does not include the out-of-pocket expenses of our patients, such as hefty professional fees and transportation, food, and lodging expenses. So, Mr. Chair, it has been decades since the enactment of the first laws which established the present hospital in Occidental Mindoro. And the bed capacities determined under these laws are not enough to service our constantly growing population. It is time for us to revisit the species of legislation and enact overdue reforms to improve healthcare service that delivered in the province of Occidental Mindoro. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Mr. Chair, I also move that this opening statement be adopted as the opening statement of five House Bills authored by this presentation. So move, Mr. Chair.
At this point, we'd like, the chair would like to recognize our resource person and the person of Doctor Between Reyes. But before that, we'd like to acknowledge the presence of the author of the bill on traditional medicine, Honorable Rosana Ria Vergara of the Third District of Maybaisiya. Madam, Dr. Abitwin.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Department of Health acknowledges the noble intent of House Bills Number 1743, 1744, 1745, 1746, and 1747, seeking to establish DOH hospitals in the province of Occidental Mindoro, particularly in the municipalities of Paluan, Lubang Island, San Jose, Santa Cruz, and Sablian. So the province of Occidental Mindoro is composed of eleven municipalities and currently it has three hospitals, as mentioned by our representative. It has an estimated bed-to-population ratio of 1 to 2,600, based on the Philippine Statistics Authority's 2023 estimated projected population. The Philippine Health Facility Development Plan 2020 to 2040 indicates that the gap for Level 1 and Level 2 hospital beds in this province by 2025 are 723 and 374 beds respectively. So further, according to the Universal Healthcare Act and the PHFDP, the service delivery design, the province must have a Level 1 and a Level 2 or 3 hospital, which the province has yet to satisfy. So in view of the foregoing, the DOH interposes no objection to the proposed establishment of Paluan Medical Center, Lubang Island Medical Center, San Jose General Hospital, Santa Cruz General Hospital, and Sablian Medical Center, provided that the following recommendations be considered. First, that the hospital shall be under the direct supervision of the local government. Since the province is yet to establish the healthcare provider network, maintaining ownership and control of these hospitals shall strengthen and ensure that the HCPN can deliver continuous healthcare from primary to tertiary care. Upgrade the bed capacity or service capability of the LGU-owned infirmaries and hospitals. So upgrading at least one province-owned Level 1 hospital into a Level 2 hospital shall complete the service delivery design of the province's HCPN. However, these recommendations shall consider factors such as, but not limited to, the availability of space and area for upgrading, expansion, adequate supply of human resources in the area, and the facilities development directions and budget requirements, among others. So it is to note that the establishment of a new hospital would require longer time and higher budget as compared to upgrading existing health facilities. That is all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much, Dr. Abitwin Reyes. May we know the reaction or any statement from the author?
Last April 23, when our good president is there at Occidental Mindoro. So I discussed it with the president and our secretary, Edger Bosan. And secretary has a recommendation that at least one, the San Jose District Hospital, to be converted to DOH. And what we did is, we have submitted two weeks ago, I think, the Sangunian-Palala-Vigan Resolution, that the taking care of this hospital will be transferred to DOH. I don't know if you have received the SP Sangunian-Palala-Vigan Resolution. And of course, our government is very supportive to be under the DOH, this San Jose District Hospital.
Any reaction to the statement, Dr. Reyes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Once we have received the directives from our principals, this will be taken into consideration. At the end of the day, legislation will prevail, so this will still have to go through the legislative process from our end. However, all documentation that will pass through will have directives naman po. So we will undergo the process. Thank you very much for the additional information, representative.
Thank you, thank you, Reyes.
I think in principle, the whole bill is most optimistically be established, objective of it. So at this point?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve in principle the five bills of Hon. Odi.
Okay, there is a motion approving bills. One, House Bills 1743, 1744, 1745, 1746, and 1747. Upon the second motion, the following bills is approved in principle, subject to technical study with the DOH and of course, the author. So with the presence of the author, Honorable Rosana Ria Vergara, we would like to tackle at this time the Traditional and Alternative Medicine Act. An act strengthening the Philippine Institute of Traditional and Alternative Healthcare, renaming it as the Philippine Institute of Traditional and Complementary Healthcare, repealing for the purpose Republic Act 8423, otherwise known as the Traditional and Alternative Medicine Act of 1997, Providing Funds Therefore, for other and for other purposes. So let us hear the author.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. My esteemed colleague Kong Tariela, distinguished resource persons, honored guests. I'm grateful for the opportunity to present and deliberate on House Bill Number 3111, which seeks to amend Republic Act Number 8423, also known as the Traditional and Alternative Medicine Act of 1997. The enactment of the Traditional and Alternative Medicine Act of 1997 was a significant milestone for our country. It led to the establishment of the Philippine Institute of Traditional and Alternative Healthcare, a dedicated government agency responsible for leading the research and development, promotion and advocacy, and setting standards for traditional and complementary medicine in our country. Over the years, the institute has made remarkable strides in enhancing the traditional and complementary medicine industry. However, it faces significant challenges due to a lack of adequate safeguards and regulatory powers. This deficiency allows dangerous practices and unsafe products to proliferate, posing serious risk to the health and lives of individuals seeking traditional and alternative remedies. According to recent data, over 50% of the Philippine population rely on traditional and complementary medicine for their primary healthcare needs, especially in rural areas where conventional medical facilities are scarce. This underscores the urgency and importance of ensuring that these alternative medicinal options are safe and effective. The passage bill of House Bill Number 3111 is crucial to addressing these regulatory gaps in our traditional and complementary medicine system. This proposed legislation will introduce government regulation into the traditional and complementary medicine sector, establish prohibited acts, and define corresponding penalties. These measures are essential for mitigating the adverse effects and potential dangers of unregulated industry. The interest and reliance on traditional and complementary medicine, service, and products, particularly in rural areas where they are often the only accessible and affordable healthcare options, underscores the urgency of this bill. It is therefore our duty to ensure that these alternative medicinal options are not only widely accessible, but also safe and effective for all our citizens. This initiative aligns with the state's policy to protect, promote the right and health of our people as enshrined in our constitution. By supporting this bill, we are taking a significant step towards safeguarding the health and welfare of our citizens. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I look forward to a meaningful discussion. Good morning, everyone.
Thank you, Honorable Vergara. So at this point, may we hear our resource persons? The chair would like to recognize Dr. Maria Teresa Inigo of the Philippine Institute of Traditional and Alternative Healthcare, PTA.
Yes. Thank you, your honor. Greetings from PTA. Good morning, everyone. A special good morning to Mr. Chair and of course, to Congresswoman Sarah Vergara, ma'am. Ria, sorry po, Congresswoman Vergara. PTA poses no objection and fully supports the proposed substitute bill with six to strengthen the traditional and complementary medicine system, amending Republic Act Number 8423, otherwise known as the Traditional Medicine Act of 1997, except for a very, very minor note on Section 27. PTA extends its gratitude and thanks to the committee for the efforts done in the further development of this substitute bill. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mama Inigo. So you have a minor note? Can you elaborate on the minor note under Section 27?
Yes, your honor. Under Section 27, under the transitory provision, it reads, "The prohibited acts under Section 20 and the penalties therefore under Section 21 shall only apply after two years from the effectivity of this act, provided that said provision shall only apply to Philippine traditional healers after five years from effectivity of this act." For this provision, your honor, we would like to make an appeal from five years to lower it down to three years. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we accept.
So it was requested to reduce from five to three years and the author would also accede to that, so that that request is hereby approved. Any other further amendments?
None, your honor. Thank you.
Okay, so any further reactions from our author? Hearing none, and the discussion is enough for the approval of this substitute bill. May we hear a motion for the approval?
Your honor.
Chair.
Mr. Chair. At number seven. The Act. Healthcare. The naming. As the Philippine Institute of Traditional and Complementary Healthcare, repealing for the purpose Republic Act 8423, otherwise known as the Traditional and Alternative Medicine Act of 1997, providing funds for and for other purposes.
I second the motion, Mr. Chair.
Upon the motion, Julie seconded. The bill and act strengthening the Philippine Institute of Traditional and Alternative Healthcare, PTA renaming it as the Philippine Institute of Traditional and Complementary Healthcare, PICH, repealing for the purpose Republic Act 8423, otherwise known as the Traditional and Alternative Medicine Act of 1997, but providing funds therefore and for other purposes, the bill is hereby approved. I'm sorry, we failed to hear the reaction from PRC. The chair would like to recognize Dr. Codensio Santa Lucia.
Thank you so much, Honorable Chair. We will submit the position paper that we have taken during our meeting in the PRC with the board, especially that this issue is contentious with regards to the practice of medicine. Anyway, we will just submit. Now, for this time, your honor, what we are worried about is when we say practice treating patient, that is the domain of the medical doctors, as written and provided for in the medical act of 1959, Republic Act 2382, which when a person is engaged in diagnosing, evaluating, treating patient, that is practice of medicine. And I think when it was discussed in some of our provisions, I think I saw it in provisions. And I think when it was discussed in some of our provisions, I think I saw it in provision in section twelve, that it has something to do with the practice, or it has something to do with practice and treatment. And in fact, there is a provision here stated that no need of standard examination that you need to give. And that is with regard to the competency of the practicing traditional medicine. And that is what we are worried about. So maybe we can harmonize it with the practice of medicine. Not only practice of medicine, I can also see that we have other professionals that may be encroached upon by this practice. Remember, nurses are also licensed, or physical therapists are also licensed. They have their competency. Pharmacist, dentist. And so this might be encroached upon by this practice. And I think that's our concern. Anyway, we will submit the position paper, Your Honor.
Your position is well noted. I would like to hear also the reaction of the PITAC, Doctor Maria Teresa Inigo.
Yes, Your Honor. PRC's opinion is hereby noted, but we're just looking for that provision that we, I believe there's a provision there, Your Honor, that for those professionals regulated by PRC, it's not going to be within the purview of this act of PITAC. Letter, section.
Sis, sis.
Letter K.
So there is specific provision?
Letter K, Your Honor, page four, line twenty nine. It reads, "To promulgate and implement rules and regulations governing the licensure of traditional and complementary medicine practitioners, excluding professionals regulated by the PRC." Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any comment from the PRC?
Yes, sir. The practice that will be conducted by a, shall we say, licensed, for example, licensed traditional medicine practitioner, I believe will have to undergo certain competencies and training, assessment, et cetera. And in fact, before they will be given the license to practice, they have to be assessed and has passed the assessment. And depending on the level of competency that we are going to to level up. The only problem there is, remember, when you treat a patient, when you give medication based on your evaluation, based on your assessment, or based on your treatment, basically that is by definition, is practice of medicine. So that's where the problem lies because doctors, well, the main question there is, how can the people and the state and the community be protected from, remember, we have standard of care that we need to maintain in our practice of medicine? That's why even if a student has already undergone medical school and finished medicine without passing through the assessment, like the licensure examination that we give, the PLE, they cannot practice medicine. They are still considered as illegally practicing medicine because they have not gone through or passed through. So yun po ang magiging, there's a thin line of delineation between this group and group of doctors. Kaya dapat po, we really have to be very certain and definite where is the demarcation? Kasi pag nagencroach yan, malaki pong problema kasi they are not doctors. Well, I'm not saying, the main purpose of this bill is to really help our people who are not, you know, being given the opportunity to to be given medicines and treated well. And sometimes, accepted naman kasi sa atin talaga 'yung mga home remedies, et cetera, et cetera. So that's where the delineation should lie. Kasi mahirap, illegal practice of medicine ang mangyayari dyan. That we condone the practice of medicine if we give license for them to practice. And in fact, in in the Supreme Court decision, even Cairo practice not considered practice of medicine in the Philippines. Although in some other countries, they might be accepted, but here in the Philippines, it's not considered a practice of medicine. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Santa Lucia. I'd like to acknowledge Representative Priya Vergara for her comments.
Yes, Dr. Lucia, Mr. Chair, I'd just like to know what in section twelve is problematic for you? What wording or what lines in this section is causing you concern?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Section twelve reads, "Practice of traditional and complementary medicine, recognizing the unique manner of obtaining the knowledge and skills of traditional medicine, it being handed down from one generation to another without the influence of formal education or training. Philippine traditional healers belonging to this category shall be exempt from the standard examination." Does the bill mean when we say standard examination, is it the competency assessment? The board exam?
Please read the whole section, sir.
So required by this act to practice T and C. Nonetheless, they are still mandated to acquire necessary grant of authority for such in accordance with the guidelines to be prescribed by the institute.
So sir, yes, so they will still have to apply. They will still be tested on their competency, but not necessarily the same testing that professional doctors who have like training. I mean, recognizing what the craft they learn is handed down from generation to generation. You can't naman explain why this kind of mixture of certain plants produces something that helps someone coughing. I mean, they will still be assessed, but just not the same way medical doctors who took academic studies for. I don't want you to think that this bill will just allow them to practice without being assessed by the PITC. Or, yeah. By the PITC. So we will still be assessing them, but just not the same rigorous way that you're doing for the ones in the PRC.
So, ma'am, if I may ask, so the standard examination that you are providing in this particular provision means examination, talaga kasi, it will not be the examination just like given to any other professionals?
Ma'am, can you explain what you're doing now?
If I may, Your Honor, just for clarification, section twelve, sir, refers to Philippine traditional healers. Under the definition of terms, it refers to section item G. Philippine traditional healers refers to persons with knowledge of indigenous and/or Philippine belief systems and traditions and health practices who use the traditional medicine of indigenous people, communities, and/or other ethno-linguistic groups in the Philippines. So this section will not cover everything. This only refers to the Philippine traditional healers and as what Honorable Congresswoman Vergara said, that PITAC will still set guidelines for them to practice. Your Honor.
Thank you for that comment. Any reaction, further discussion?
Good morning, everyone. So still the board have some reservations on the practice of some invasive procedures, like for example, in acupuncture, which would entail some on the patient's safety. Well, we would like to recommend therefore that the professionals who are practicing this invasive procedure should be under the supervision of a medical professional.
Honorable Vergara?
What if the acupuncturist is a medical professional already that just subspecialized in acupuncture? Would that address your concern?
Yeah, I think so, ma'am.
Because I see acupuncturists, and they're doctors that subspecialized in acupuncture.
Yes, ma'am. So because I remember, ma'am, there are acupuncturists that we have already certified that are non-professionals, and they did undergo some training in the community. And they do their acupuncture independently. So I think it's best for them to to join, maybe join a group, an association, who would be able to certify their competency on the knowledge on this acupuncture. Because these are all invasive procedures, ma'am. Only in those modalities that are invasive to patients. Yes, ma'am.
With regard to that issue, I think a provision here would be relevant answer. The institute shall provide the necessary license based on the practitioner's education and training as certified by the institution. So ibig sabihin po, let's say, meron siyang practice na invasive procedure like acupuncture, bibigyan siya ng license, dun lang sa acupuncture training niya. Without it, hindi siya accredited practitioner. So parang may safeguard na rin po under this bill, kasi nakalagay dito, bibigyan siya ng certificate or certified siya bago siya gumawa na acupuncture procedure. Under section twelve, line nine to thirteen. Any other? So all your comments were all. Any resource person would like to comment? May we hear Ms. Marian Layah from Philippine Council for Health Research and Development, DOSTPC HRD.
Good morning. The council strongly supports the proposal substitute bill to strengthen the Philippine Institute of Traditional and Alternative Healthcare, or PITAC, and renaming it to the Philippine Institute of Traditional and Complementary Healthcare, PCHRD. Recognizing the significant role that traditional and complementary medicine plays in the health and well-being of Filipinos, particularly in rural areas where these practices often serve as the primary source of healthcare, PCHRD believes that enhancing the regulatory powers of the institute is essential. This will ensure that TNCN practices and products meet high standards of safety, efficacy, and quality, thereby protecting public health and building trust in traditional healthcare methods. Mr. Chair, we will provide detailed comments and feedback on specific provisions in our forthcoming official position paper, pending approval from our secretary. That's all, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. That's all you noted, and we will wait for your official position paper, for that matter. Yes, Dr. Santa Lucia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to be clarified regarding the creation of a commission, diba? That will handle, for example, like a regulatory power. Also, parang, what about the cases that will be? It's just like a duplication of the PRC's function. Kasi all other professionals, but here you are only dealing with the so-called non-professionals. And all matters pertaining to the practice, including the issues on, I cannot say it's malpractice because it's, the term is for for mga doctors, diba? So I don't know how do you call it. So you will be responsible also for determining liabilities, et cetera. Not unless filed in a regular court, but just for the, for example, revocation, suspension of license, it will be within your power. Within your, so it's quasi judicial and quasi legislative power. You have the legislative power because you also make the policy on that.
We'd like to hear a reaction from PITAC, but before that, we'd like to acknowledge the presence of Honorable Charisse Ann Hernandez, our committee member, representative, lone district representative of Calabasas City. Morning. Yes, Doctora Inigo?
Yes, for that concern, I'd like to reiterate as well, I think como naman 'yung understanding namin that for those professionals regulated by PRC, PITAC is not going to handle those cases, sir. But for those not regulated by PRC, they will be covered by the provisions here for the prohibited acts or violations.
Yes, Doctor Santa Lucia.
What about if PRC would deem it as illegal practice of medicine? Because we cannot say that medical practitioners will not, you know, complain about this. Like if they see in their locality, somebody is practicing, because actually, ano'to eh, like overlapping of the practice of medicine at the same time, we just call it the way. What if the doctor, for example, files a complaint of illegal practice of medicine? And yun ang magiging, it's good if the one practicing the traditional, this traditional are nurses, or PT, or any allied health, or even doctors, we can have the jurisdiction of them. However, if they are non-professionals, and the professional like doctors will file cases against them. Will it be in your, yun po ang medyo, we need to be clarified on this because 'yung regulatory power, magkaiba po eh, meron, thank you.
Yes, of course, we'd like to hear the reaction.
Yes, thank you. You see, this is traditional and complementary healthcare. This is not in competition with the conventional or the allopathic medicine. In other countries, they have a different ministry solely devoted for traditional and complementary healthcare. For those concerned, I believe and I'm appealing that you trust PITAC, that once we license or we accredit a practitioner, it meant that it has gone, that practitioner has gone through the rigorous training and other documentary requirement. Like for acupuncture, they have basic and advanced Like for acupuncture, they have basic and advanced training plus six hundred hours of supervised training. In other countries, this is all, this is already considered like a crucial, critical part of their healthcare system. I'm also a doctor myself. I understand where the good gentleman is coming from, sir. But this one is, the regulatory powers now being vested upon PITAC. Hopefully, this gets approved really will really ensure for the quality and safe practices. Thank you.
Okay, all your comments are duly noted. Probably we can harmonize this in further refinement of the bill. At this point, we'd like to recognize, I'd like to recognize Ms. Lynette Lee Kerubin from the Food and Drug Administration. Good morning. And also, okay, so, ma'am Kerubin, any comment on the issue?
Good morning, your honor. I just a clarificatory on the proposed substitute bill on the regulation of the establishment engaged in the manufacturer importation, exportation, and sale of herbal medicines and traditionally used herbal products. These are currently under the jurisdiction of the Food and Drug Administration as laid down in RA 3720, as amended by EO 175 and further amended by RA 9711 and also reflected in RA 8203 and RA 9502. Thank you, your honor.
Any reaction from PITAC?
That is noted, your honor. PITAC is not going to touch on that. We recognize and we acknowledge that that is within FDA's authority, your honor.
So it's cleared, but it's not in the purview of the PITAC to regulate the exportation, importation of medicine. So it's cleared with that issue. Okay, so I'd like to recognize also Doctor Lambert David from Philhealth.
Good morning, your honor. Philhealth has, has no opposition to the, to the proposed bill. Everything that Philhealth needs to develop, the, any packages for traditional alternative medicine is already covered by the bill. I think I just want to remind if ever PITAF or the coming incoming management of the proposed PITCH, they are the one that will propose to Philhealth what traditional procedure or medicine that they want Philhealth to cover. And they must refer this to the Health Technology Assessment Committee for, for a positive recommendation so that Philhealth will cover such a traditional medicine modality, your honor. Thank you, Po.
Thank you. That sounds a big support from Philhealth for the PITAC to, of course, do the necessary process for further development of this traditional medicine practice. So any comment from the members?
No, Mister Chair, I hope, we approve this already, right?
Yeah, yeah, yes. So thank you so much for the very thorough discussions. Since the bill is already approved, all your positions will be taken care of in the refinement of the bill. Moving on. A one-minute break. Session resume. One of the agenda of today's committee hearing is the House Bill Number 1978 entitled "An Act Promoting the Rights and Welfare of Nurses by Regulating and Limiting Their Consecutive Work Hours" by Representative Patrick Michael Vargas. The chair would like to recognize Honorable Charisse Ann Hernandez.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Again, we thank you for considering this very significant bill. And in behalf of our representative PM Vargas, I would like to move that the explanatory note of the said bill be adopted as its sponsorship speech. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Honorable Hernandez. The sponsorship speech is, the explanatory note is hereby approved. At this point, I'd like to hear Ms. Eloy Flores from the Department of Health presenting as representative of Honorable Chedoro Teater Boss.
Assalamualaikum. Good morning, Mister Chair and your honor. Department of Health Rapposition Paper, an Act of Promoting House Bill Number 1978, an Act Promoting the Rights and Welfare of Nurses by Regulating and Limiting Their Consecutive Hours. The Department of Health supports the intent of House Bill Number 1978 which seek to promote the right and welfare of nurses by regulating and limiting their consecutive work hours as this is in line with the Pursuit of DOH Action Agenda Number Seven, Kapakanan at Karapatan ng Health Workers. This legislation shall aid in curbing the low nurses-to-population ratio in the country, promote retention of nurses, and safeguard their health and wellness. Further, the DOH provides the following recommendations. Number one, align the provisions in sections three and four with the existing rules on working hours of healthcare workers issued by the Civil Service Commission and the Department of Labor and Employment. Number two, prioritize nurse well-being and patient safety by carefully considering the potential implication of shift-length implementing strategies to mitigate risks associated with fatigue and burnout. Number three, indicated in the above-mentioned law and policy, the normal working hours of healthcare workers working in public and private health facilities shall not exceed eight hours a day or forty hours per week. Therefore, the healthcare employer should implement the indicated normal working hours. Number four, hospitals to create board of discipline on setting the process of investigation of violation should a public or private health facility violate the normal work hours or the agreed regular scheduled work hours. Lastly, number five, allow voluntary work time provided that there is additional compensation for rendering services beyond normal working eight hours a day or agreed regular schedule. The DOH will submit its official signed position paper once, once signed by the Secretary of Health. Thank you, Po, your honor.
Thank you for that. We would gladly receive your official position paper. Now, going next to our resource person, I'd like to recognize from the Philippine Nurses Association, Doctor Gloria Yan.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning to the Honorable Chair and other representative that is present today. We are, today we are tackling the House Bill 1978 and this is an act promoting the rights and welfare of nurses by regulating and limiting their consecutive work hours. Must understand that nurses constitute a crucial part in the healthcare system. They are expected to work forty hours a week, typically spreads across a five-days-and-eight-hour shift. However, especially during the pandemic period, the ever-increasing workload is exacerbated by understaffing where nurses themselves are always stricken by illness at that time. Difficult for staffing rotation, leaving some health institution to adopt a twelve-hours or sixteen-hours work shifting. However, right now, after the pandemic crisis, we are now undergoing a lot of survey wanting to know about the advantage of the twelve-hours and the eight-hours or is it purely eight-hours or it should be a combination of eight and twelve-hours? Thing is, Po, let's, PNA would like today's, through today's venue, we would like to explore the reason why nurses often are unable to leave their workstations at the end of their shift, alright? PNA would like to present some attributable reasons. Number one, the primary reason is inadequate number of nurses per shift. Therefore, with fewer nurses that is available to handle patient care, thereby, the nurses' workload increases up to a certain percentage. Thus, the nurses have to stay longer on an extended hour per shift. So they are unable to leave on time, even if it's an eight-hour, no? So to make matters worse, these nurses who works extra hours are often not compensated fairly. Instead, they have to choose between exchange of days off, work another day, or sometimes to some of the nurses, TY nalang, no? This is saddening and it causes financial strain to the nurses and to other healthcare workers. Plus, it is physically draining with limited time to recharge and energize, plus emotional burden because of even less time to take care of themselves and their own family. So therefore, today, PNA urge everyone in this forum to please help address the above issue. Healthcare facilities need to deliberate on strategies to, to reduce nurses' workload, improve shift rotation and scheduling, implement better time management. Instead of switching days off, nurses should be paid and manage, to be paid fairly compensated for overtime to be remunerated with the extra hour or extended hours work performed as being meant, as the term, this is the term used outside of the Philippines. We should offer more benefits incentive and ensure expanding health benefits for allied health workers. All this said, ultimately, this will lead to more effective and resilient healthcare system that will benefit both nurses and the patient that they serve. Thank you all very much, and PNA hope for a greater support from everyone here.
Thank you so much for your very insightful position, comments. Before moving on, we'd like to recognize the presence of one of our member under this committee, the representative from Kabayan Partis, Honorable Roan Salo. We'd like to recognize the Chief of Staff of Public Services Labor Independent Confederation, BS Link, Ms. Julian Roque.
We thank the, the author of the bill for recognizing the prevalent practice, or should we say, exploitation of our nurses who are forced to work excessive long hours at the expense of their health and well-being and to the detriment of health service delivery and patient safety. We certainly recognize the noble intent behind the proposed bill to ensure just and humane conditions of work, encourage retention of nurses in the country by improving working conditions and addressing burnout issues among nurses. However, we have concerns about merely focusing on prohibiting excessive work hours alone without taking measures to ensure safe staffing ratios in our hospitals and health facilities. The reality is nurses are far too overworked and overstretched and employers, both in the public and private sectors, are not creating enough regular positions for nurses with decent work and pay. During last week's hearing, we heard the Philippine Public Health Association president or representative talk about the nursing ratio, one is to one, but that means, but he meant one is, one nurse is to one ward. Okay, so ganun po ang reality kasi talaga, no? Ang, ang DOH recommended ratio ay one is to twelve po, no? Pero ang reality, doble-doble yung ano, no? Ang, ang, ang hinahandle ng ating mga nurses. So many leave nursing because they are paid too low while the work is too exhausting and unsafe for them and their patients. We need to ensure safe staffing levels and strengthen enforcement. For us, mandating safe staffing ratios would lead to safer, healthier, and more sustainable conditions in health facilities and hospitals. This means more decent working conditions for our nurses. This would better protect nurses and create the conditions that would allow nurses to work regular work hours. This would also lead to better nursing care and ensure that patients receive safe and quality care in adequately-staffed hospitals and health facilities. To strengthen enforcement, we recommend ensuring regular inspections of hospitals and health facilities. We also need to ensure mechanisms where nurses or other health workers can report abuses. This should be coupled with visual door protections for nurses to ensure that they won't be afraid to speak out or expose the truth if healthcare employers fail to implement safe staffing ratios and endanger patient lives. And also, as much as possible, we need stiffer penalties. Nagconsult, consult po kami at sabi talagang, yung sa bill po ay one hundred thousand actually yung nakalagay, pero baka pwedeng talagang, mas kailangan papuntaasan yung penalties, no? Additional recommendation, we also need to be very clear that any hours in excess of the regular work hours should be paid overtime. I echo the same sentiments of the representative from PNA. Ang, in reality po, talagang walang nagbabayad ng overtime, it's only compensatory time off or TY. Thank you. So yun po yung talagang malaking reklamo daing ng mga nurses na. We partly, we like the title of the bill, the proposed bill, Care for Nurses Welfare Act, napakaganda. And we have been strongly campaigning for a more comprehensive nursing bill that will enhance overall nursing practice, increase salaries of nurses for both public and private sectors, provide more incentives and benefits for our nurses such as free hospital care, scholarship grants, free CPD trainings, and other noncash benefits for nurses and their dependents, as well as improve their professional development opportunities. We enjoin our House representatives to support such a comprehensive nursing bill which will ensure fair wages and decent work for all nurses as towards universal healthcare, patient safety, and sustainable development for all. Marami po salamat.
Thank you so much, Ma'am Julian Roque. Your insights are so very valuable. And we will take note of that and surely would like to be, that be part of the bill. We may hear a reaction from Doctora Yan.
Yes, thank you very much, Po, sir. We would like to, we really thank Ms. Julian for their effort to help the nurses. We would like to request from Julian, please, if you could send us a copy of your position paper so we could also bring it out to our officers at PNA and let them know that there are other institutions and organization who is backing us up. Thank you very much, Po.
Okay, we'll move on, but we would like to recognize first the presence of the representative from BHW Partis, Honorable Angelica Natasha Ko. Moving on, I'd like to recognize Mister Julito Paul from the Philippine Public Health Association. from the Philippine Public Health Association.
Good morning, Your Honor. I am Julito Paul from the Philippine Public Health Association, a national association for local government units, public health workers, the national government agencies, and the GOCCs. I am a nurse five of a government retained, DOH- retained hospital in Cagendio, and I am representing PPHA. The healthcare sector is integral to societal well-being with the nurses playing a pivotal role in delivering quality care. However, the issue of nurse working hours has become a pressing concern, impacting both the quality of patient care and the overall well-being of nurses. Nursing professionals are often subject to long and irregular working hours, including night shifts, extended shifts, and inadequate breaks. This demanding schedule not only affects our health and work-life balance, but also compromises patient safety and care quality. The WHO and various health organizations have emphasized the importance of decent working conditions for healthcare workers to maintain high standards of patient care and to support the overall health system. I would like to emphasize three current challenges. One is health and well-being. Because extended working hours and frequent night shifts contribute to fatigue, stress, and burnout among us nurses, these conditions are linked to physical and mental health issues, including cardiovascular diseases, which I for one has been operated for open bypass last year, anxiety and depression. The lack of adequate rest and recovery time further exacerbates these problems. Second is quality of patient care. Studies have demonstrated a direct correlation between nurse fatigue and decreased patient care quality. Nurses who are overworked and are more prone to errors, which can lead to adverse patient outcomes. Ensuring adequate rest and manageable work hours is crucial for maintaining high standards of patient care. And lastly, work-life balance. Because long and irregular hours disrupt nurses' personal lives, impacting their ability to maintain healthy relationships, pursue personal interests, and engage in restorative activities. A poor work-life balance can lead to job dissatisfaction and high turnover rates, further straining the healthcare system. I have five recommendations. One is to implement standardized shift lengths. Establishing a maximum shift length such as twelve hours can help mitigate fatigue and ensure that nurses have sufficient time to rest between shifts. Additionally, regular breaks during shifts should be mandated to support ongoing alertness and effectiveness. Second, promote adequate staffing levels. Ensuring appropriate nurse-to-patient ratios is essential for reducing individual workloads and prevent burnout among us nurses. Adequate staffing not only improves care quality, but also supports nurses' ability to manage their work hours more effectively. Third is to encourage flexible scheduling. Offering flexible scheduling options can help accommodate us nurses' personal needs and preferences, promoting better work-life balance. This approach may include options for part-time works, job sharing, or self-scheduling where feasible. Fourth is to support mental health initiatives. Providing access to mental health resources and support services can help nurses manage stress and prevent burnout. Implementing wellness programs and creating supportive work environments are crucial for maintaining nurse well-being. And lastly, regular evaluation and adjustments. Healthcare institutions should regularly review and adjust work policies based on feedback from nursing staff and emerging evidences on the impacts of working hours. This ongoing evaluation helps ensure that policies remain effective and responsive to changing needs. To conclude, addressing the issue of nurse working hours is essential for promoting decent work conditions and ensuring high-quality patient care by implementing standardized shift lengths, improving staffing levels, offering flexible scheduling, and supporting mental health. Healthcare systems can enhance the well-being of nurses and the quality of care they provide. Investing in these reforms is not only a matter of ethical responsibility, but also a strategic necessity for sustaining a resilient and effective healthcare workforce. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Moving next, the chair would like to recognize the representative from Medical Action Group, Ms. Edilisa Hernandez.
Yeah. Basahin ko nalang po ang aming maliit na statement in relation dun sa House Bill nineteen seventy-eight. Ang Medical Action Group po ay isang health and human rights organization, at kinuromend ang author ng House Bill nineteen seventy-eight for their genuine concern and efforts to address the issues faced by the Filipino nurses. Indeed, these issues are critical as quality of patient care can significantly deteriorate when nurses are overworked. However, the bill's focus on limiting working hours alone does not address underlying problems affecting nurses and other healthcare workers. While managing working hours is important, the bill falls short of tackling other essential concerns such as adequate compensation and comprehensive support for all healthcare workers. A moralistic approach is needed, one that encompasses both public and private healthcare settings and addresses a broader range of public health issues. The Magna Carta for healthcare workers, although established, requires stronger enforcement to ensure the fair and appropriate compensation for healthcare workers, particularly nurses. Further, it should address healthcare manpower equity issues by aligning health education outcomes to the actual workforce needs. Additionally, the Magna Carta needs to be enhanced to improve the safety and security protections for the healthcare workers. Presently, there is a gap in effective safety and security measures leaving healthcare workers vulnerable to threats and violence. As documented by the Medical Action Group, there are about, during COVID periods, there are about forty-six threats and violence received by healthcare professionals during COVID. From death, from deaths, death of two healthcare workers to threat and violence, or being turned away by their home during COVID. And so, to shorten my, and we also reiterate our call for the protection of other healthcare workers. For example, the death of seven doctors during the time of the past administration. This has never been addressed nor significantly mentioned by the Department of Justice. And finally, the healthcare workers are often celebrated as heroes, but this honor is meaningless without adequate wages, proper staffing, and sustainable working conditions. The government policymakers and health institutions must address these issues to ensure that healthcare workers are valued and their rights are upheld. Failure to do so may lead to further resignations, compromising the healthcare system's effectiveness, and especially in crises like COVID-ninety. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for that valuable insight. We will duly take note of that and, of course, try to incorporate in the refinement of this bill. At this point, would like to recognize the representative from Filipino Nurse United, the National Council Member, Mr. Niko Lito Oba.
Isang magandang umaga po sa lahat. Ako po si Nico, isa pong nurse from National Children's Hospital, nurse one po. Ako po ay anim na taon ng nurse, apat na taon po nun ay kontraktwal sa probinsya. Tatlong hospital na po napuntahan ko, at natutuwa namang po ako dahil dito po sa National Children's Hospital, which is a DOH hospital, ay isa pa akong regular nurse one. Pero ayoko pong iwan ito na iwanan 'yung mga naging kontrak, mga kontraktwal kong kasama sa probinsya at ibang LGU, sa pamamagitan ng pag-share ko ng aking experience. Bale po sa apat na taon na yun, nagulat talaga ako kasi sa totoo lang po, dito lang ako nakaranas ng, sa thirty days, meron akong more than thirty days na kontraktwal ako, thirty days din ang aking, ang binabayad sa akin ng isang hospital, which is minimum wage yun. Pero ginagawa ko yun dahil mahal ko ang mga pasyente at gusto ko po talagang maging nurse. So pinagbigyan ko ang ganitong serbisyo kasi medyo may kabataan pa po tayo. Pero yun nga po, nakapagtataka, una nagtaka ko yun, pero alam ko na konting konti na lang mga nurses. Gusto kong ikumpara ang ating sitwasyon sa isang hemorrhage na talagang buhos na 'yung dugo ng ating sektor ng pangkalusugan, ang ating health, ito, ang kondisyon na ating sistema ng pangkalusugan. Pero ang pinibigay natin na panglunas ay parang pantaki lang, parang first aid lang, ganun. Na hindi natin, alam naman natin bilang mga medical practitioner, na ito ay pwedeng masanin ng talagang collapse ng ating healthcare system. Ang pagkawala po ng mga nurses natin ay hindi po talaga 'yan biro. Ito po ay talagang patunay na hindi napapahalagahan ng mga nurses at ang kapabayaan ng ating gobyerno sa pagbibigay ng halaga sa constitutional right ng ating mga tao, ng ating mga mamayang sa kanilang kalusugan at sa kanilang buhay. Kasi kung pinapahalagahan talaga natin ito, pinibigyan natin ng pansin ang mas napakahalagang tugon dito sa napakalaking problema. Pero ito pong bill na to ay isang, ang ating, ang ginawa ay isang napaka-conservative na move. At ito po ay, ako po ay natutuwa bilang parte ng Filipino Nurses United na merong ginawang ganito, kasi ito po, sabihan kanina sa pag-uusap namin ay matagal na talagang problema. At hanggang ngayon po ay marami pa rin po ang naaabuso. At ito po ay na-opress po, lalo ng mga bagong nurses. Sa totoo lang po, may iba't ibang level ng nurses. Nurse one, nurse two, nurse three, nurse four, hanggang nurse seven, yan. Pero pinakaapektado talaga nito 'yung mga clinical nurses, 'yung mga nasa direktang nangangalaga sa mga pasyente. At sila po, sa totoo lang po, hindi namang po sila lahat katulad na mga bata. They are ranging forty, fifty years old. May mga kasama po ako sa clinical na hindi namang po talaga po promote. At siguro dapat yun ang bigyan ng pansay ng DOH or ng ating gobyerno na kaysa sa bigyan ng promotion at maraming itong mga ating mga nagkakaroon ng edad ng mga nurses. Kasi kayo po sa clinical, araw-araw po ang laban. Kapag po tayo ay nasa loob ng isang, kapag po ay duty mo, isang segundo lang na pumatake 'yung duty mo at natapos 'yung endorsement niyo, wala na pong, ah, wala na pong tapos ang laban na yun. Nakaranas po ako sa aking pakiging kontraktwal, tatlo. Mag-isa lang ako sa totoo po yan, one is to one, TB ward. Bale, ang pasyente ko is almost twenty-two at tinawag na ako ng isang nanay. Sabi, nurse, 'yung pasyente ko po hindi humihiga sa isang, sa isang ano po, sa isang, so nag-code ako mag-isa. Ako lang po ang nag-CPR, kasama ko 'yung isang ano, isang, ang bantay, 'yung anak na babae. Sabi niya, ay sabi ko, mamikau nalang po, kasi intubated siya pero nag, ano, wala pong ventilator dun sa probinsya na machine. So talagang manual siyang nag-bevent, ay nagpa-pump ng bag ng oxygen. Tapos, maya-maya, 'yung sa kabilang kwarto, nurse, parang hindi rin humihiga si tatay. So ano gagawin ko bilang isang nurse? Saglit lang po, so iniwan ko yun papunta doon, kasi unang-una po, isa lang ang doktor dun sa probinsyang yun. Tapos, isa rin ng nurse during that time, ako yun, at bagong nurse din ako. Sa totoo lang po, during that moment, tatlo po ang nangangailangan ng tulong ko at nag-aagaw buhay. Sa isang sitwasyon na yun, na nakikita po natin, is totoo po, pinag-aanuhan natin na gusto natin na malalapo, sobrang lalapo ang sitwasyon ng mga nurses, lalo na sa probinsya at sa mga LGUs. Kami po, sa totoo lang, narito na ako, nag-eenjoy na ako ng mga vacation leave, nag-eenjoy ako ng mga thirteen-month pay, fourteen-month pay, four, sila po ng mga nasa kontraktwal level. Wala po sila mga ganitong, pero 'yung dedication nila ay pareho at ang trabaho nila ay parang trabahong kalabaw. Ganun po, tas bibigyan po ninyo ng sobrang twelve hours na hindi compensated, more than twelve hours. Imagine niyo po 'yung forty years old na very dedicated, na kilala ko si Ina, na aking, kumbaga naging mentor. Actually, galing siyang abroad, bumalik lang siya dito sa Pilipinas para sa pamilya niya. Kaya naniniwala po ako, hindi lahat ng nurses gusto mag-abroad. Ako po, isang Filipino Nurses United na nurse, nag-apply ako sa gobyerno kasi naniniwala ako na kailangan ang serbisyo ko dito sa gobyerno ito. Pero kung ito po ay hindi talaga mabigyan ng pansay ng gobyerno, parang sa totoo lang po, napipilitan talaga kami na umalis dito sa ibang bansa sa sobrang dami ng opportunity. Pero ito po ang sasabi ko lang, kung talagang gusto ng mga Pilipino na umalis dito sa bansang ito, sana itong mga edad na forty or fifty years old na nasa clinical practice pa at nandun sa nurse one, nurse two, at hindi nagpo-promote hanggang nurse three, hindi na po promote dahil sa politika or kung ano man ang dahilan, kanong kulay. Pero ito po, ang ibig lang sabihin ito, maraming po talaga ang makabansa at talagang tunay na bayani na hindi iniwan ang bansa, hindi iniwan ang mga mamayang may sakit, ang mamayang Pilipino nangangailangan ng tulong. Ako po, sa totoo lang, swerte na po ako dahil sa National Children's Hospital, mga bata po, ang pinaglilingkuran ko masaya, tsaka sa totoo lang. Pero hindi nabibigyan ang aming nagpindat ng pansin na nagkakaroon kami ng, tama po yun, psychological problem, psychological problem, or kapag nagyayinklosmo 'yung isang bata, tapos sobrang tagal mong makasama, tapos biglang nabalitaan mo sa group chat niyo, siya ay nawala. Isa pong, hindi namin alam paano may proseso yun, wala pong tulong or suporta sa gobyerno na ibibigay dun sa amin. Pangalawa po, wala po tayong tinatawag na empowerment or leadership para sa mga clinical nurses or sa mga nurse one, two, or kontraktwal na para malaman nila kung ano mang karapatan at kung paano ba talaga natin natatratok. Kaya pag dumating kami sa loob ng hospital, hindi namin alam kung binubully na kami or kaya tama lang ba ito, hanggang sa tanggapin na lang namin ang katotohanan na after twelve-hour shift namin, pwede pa kami nagduduty pa kami ng more than four hours para tapusin lang ang trabaho na hindi naman dapat na sa amin. Or kaya ito, 'yung mga trabahong ito ay dahilan ng kakulangan ng nurses o kaya hindi effective ang pagbibigay ng tamang trabaho. Kasi minsan, for example, intubated or ganyan, dahil wala na, may mga mas experienced tayong nurses, pero asan na sila, nasa abroad, nahahawakan po sila namin 'yung mga bagong nurses. Kayo po, sa totoo lang, na mga taxpayers, naniniwala po ba kayo na dapat nag-eenjoy tayo ng serbisyo ng gobyerno kaysa sa nagbabayad tayo ng milyon-milyon sa isang pribadong hospital? Pero hindi natin mapagkatiwalaan ang ating government hospital, sa totoo lang. Kasi po, wala po tayong mga expert na nurses na natitira dito. Kung hindi man medyo matatanda na, katulad, actually po ako medyo may, marapit na po ako diyan, hindi na po kasing bilis na kayang i-attend ang twenty to thirty patient at nangangailangan ng emergency cases sa oras at moment na yan. So, gusto ko po makita niyo 'yung picture talaga ng isang malalang public hospitals. At actually, huwag namang po natin baliwalain ang mga nasa private hospitals na talaga din halos pareho din ang nararanasan na pasakit. Yun po, gusto po namin na ikomend na dapat naman talaga, kapag more than eight hours, actually po sabi ko, naku, 'yung mga kasama ko sa trabaho na expert nurses na, pero sabi natin na almost ten years na, nurse two pa rin, kasi ayaw na nila magpaangat ng kung ano mang reasons, pero gusto nila lang talaga sa tabi ng mga pasyente. Eh, after five hours, wala na po kaming energy. As in, for example, kaya sabi ko, gusto pa nilang dagdagan ng twelve hours. Dapat ang nagsasalita dito, 'yung mga tao na nakakaranas araw-araw ng laban sa ward. Kasi totoo lang po kami, ako po ay galing pang-night shift kagabi, twelve-hours shift, pero po, pagdating ng madaling araw ng alas doce, dahil meron po akong dalawang, nasa, meron po tayong mga influenza patients na dapat inaalagan ngayon, wala na po kaming maga-administrative work kapag ganun. So meron, wala ka nang maisulat sa documentation mo, kasi pagod na ang katawan mo, pagod na ang halos pawis na pawis ka. Kasi po dito sa Pilipinas, hindi namang po lahat ay nabigyan ng pagkakataon na makapagtrabaho sa fully air-conditioned na hospital. Kahit gabi, kapag sa ibang government hospital, sobrang init dahil lalo na nung panahon ng el ninyo, yun ang mga hindi natin nakikita, na tayo nasa loob ng opisina, nasa loob ng ano. Pero 'yung mga nurses natin na ukal sa loob at hindi iniisip na sila ay naaabuso na, sana po sa ganitong paraan ay narinig sila. Kasi po, maraming beses na sinasabi ko na nga dun sa amin na, naku, ang iba may mga iba't ibang hospital, iba't iba rin ang mekanismo. Kasi po, maraming beses na sinasabi ko na nga dun sa amin na, naku, ang iba may mga, iba't ibang hospital, iba't iba rin ang mekanismo. Kaya tama po 'yun narinig ko na dapat lahat may mekanismo para hindi silensyo ang batas. Silensyo na paggaya nito, baka naman maabuso dahil consecutive eight work hours, sabi ko, five hours pa lang nga na pagtatrabaho na hindi ka kumain or ano, kasi sa sobrang demand ng intubated na bata, kailangan niya ng every time mass action, 'yung kanyang prema at minsan bumababa ng, ang kanyang otusat ng ET two. Ito po ay naghihingalo, pero kailangan mo i-revive, kailangan pakipagpatintero kay kamatayan para sa batang 'yan, para sa pamilya ng batang 'yan. 'Yun po 'yung hindi natin napapansin na, kung ito po ay, ito po ay naano namin, naappreciate namin sa Filipino Nurses United. Pero sana po, may mas ah, agresibo pa na pagbigay pansin sa welfare at karapatan ng mga nurses. Lalo-lalo na po, ito mga contractual na nurses at ito pong mga nurses na bago, may sasalang natin. Para po naman, maiwasan talagang burnout at mabigyan ng mga kaupulang ah, empowerment, ah, mga psychological assessment or tulong para ma-assess nila, ma-process nila, 'yung mga araw-araw na laban sa loob. Kasi sa totoo lang, uuwi sila, nadadala nila sa family nila, 'yung stress, uuwi sila. Kaya siguro hindi na rin sinusuportahan ng iba na magpatuloy na mag-nurse, ang isang nurse. Kasi ang stress sa loob ng hospital, ibang-iba. At kahit siyempre, tao lang namang po tayo, hindi tayo makina. Limang oras lang, dun po ay di ako lang, limang oras lang nakikita ko, hindi na po tama ang, hindi na po na 'yung best fit ang isang nurse para matapos ang kanyang ah, ginagawa. Sana po, ang gawin ng DOH ay mag ano siya, mag-observa, hindi 'yung audit na, aalamin, ito, announce audit, ganito. So magpre, gagawin na maayos ang, ano, ay sorry.
Resource person 'yung may wrap up?
So pwede pong, kahit po obserbahan nila, kung talaga bang nagbabago ang kakayahan ng isang nurse sa loob ng walong oras. Ilang oras lang ang kakayahan niya. Kasi in the end of that day, bottom line ito, safety ng patient ang pinag-uusapan natin. Gusto natin, na maibigay natin ang nararapat na, na kailangan ng pasyente na mab, para karapatan niya mabuhay at karapatan niya sa kalusugan. Maraming salamat po mula sa Filipino Nurses United.
Very insightful and very sentimental. Thank you for stating the actual plight of our nurses on a day-to-day work. At this point, we'd like to recognize Mr. Omar Montejo from the Association of Nursing Services Administrators of the Philippines.
Mister Chair and to the members of the rest of who are present here today. As a quick backgrounder, the Association of Nursing Service Administrator of the Philippines is a professional organization composed of Filipino nursing service administrators and managers. And to wrap it up with our direct intent present here in this, in this session, we would like to express our gratitude for the House Bill nineteen one nine seven eight. And with this, based on the survey conducted among the nursing administrators, the issue of nursing hours is not the main problem of the nursing burnout specifically, but there are other issues that we need to tackle also. Essentially, the main issues and concern pertaining to the following. Number one, the nurse patient ratio per equity or level of care. As we are aware, Mister Chair, that there are existing already qualification standards and requirements for nurse patient ratio as set forth by the Department of Health that we are following. But based on the existing, private and government institution have different nurse patient ratio as per they are following. For the record, of course, the government hospitals are following the existing mandate which is set forth by the DOH. There are also that we look into into the private area, the private sectors of their nurse patient ratio. Kasi diyan po nagkakaiba. Sometimes they are dividing the nursing, the nursing service, the nursing service areas into patient care or regular units, 'yung naadmitan po ng usual ng mga rooms at saka 'yung mga special areas just like your OR and ICU. The existing ratio as of the moment is one is to twenty-five. Based on existing, some of the other private institution are following one is to six and one is to eight. Then for the critical areas, they're following the one is to three and one is to three, ah, one is to one per patient. The forty hours work, working hours is still applicable and implemented. However, a nurse may be given the leverage, uh, privilege to have the six, the eight or twelve hours duty shift. We look into also at the same time, the working conditions, the value of nursing is not appreciated by the management, working compensation, general nursing unit and those in the specialized area, and the career pathway or progression. Overtime is the result of understaffing. The plantilia positions need to be reviewed and updated in response to the pressing needs of competency-based manpower, generational workforce characteristics, and complexity of patient equity. To focus more on compliance, maybe we really have to devise the nurse patient ratio standards for private, uh, for private agencies or hospitals at the same time in accordance with the compliance of the existing mandate of the nurse patient ratio as the basic minimum requirement set forth by the government. And based on, based on this one, as to conclusion, most of the nursing service administrator supports the bill and to look into the flexible of eight and twelve hours based on the need on the patient unit. More to this is to support the twelve or eight hour shift schedule granting that it will not affect the government's mandate on required number of working hours and the required hospital workforce capacity. This will be the main focus for this one, the nurse patient ratio. And lastly, the ANSA strongly advocates for the flexible working hours for nurses as raising the bar for better working conditions. It is recommended that increased compensation and benefits, recognition and competency-based certifications, and a safe staffing ratio and appreciation of the management to value nurses and nursing healthcare system will be focused. Thank you very much, Mister Chair.
Thank you for the very substantive recommendation. We will surely take note of that. Would like to recognize Honorable Salvador Plato, our member of this committee from the sixth district of Bulacan. Moving on, I'd like to hear our resource person from the Nursing Services Philippine, Nursing Services of the Philippine Heart Center, Dr. Chriselle Galang.
Good morning, Mister Honorable Chair and of course, the honorable members of the Congress and the rest of the audience. Um, I am Chriselle M. Galang, Deputy Executive Director for Nursing Service. I am a nurse po. Um, I have been with the Philippine Heart Center for thirty years. So just an brief introduction of my institution. The Philippine Heart Center is a level-three government-owned and controlled corporation accredited by the DOH specializing in the treatment of heart ailments. So we admit more than fourteen thousand patients every year, including three thousand three hundred that undergo heart surgery. So a big portion of the hospital manpower are from the nursing services. So we have a complement of one thousand five hundred nursing personnel and nine hundred of them are nurses. And right now, I am happy to note that the turnover of nurses in our institution is, we have an average of one point eleven. So unacceptable turnover rate is ten percent. And we have an average of nine resignees every month. But moving forward, the nursing service of the Philippine Heart Center conducted a study in twenty sixteen to review the existing PHC nursing staff model which utilize a structured schedule system for all nursing units and to determine the preferred staffing schedule of the nursing services of the Philippine Heart Center. So our nursing staff model is a structured schedule system for critical and non-critical units with a twelve-hour shifting schedule from seven AM to seven PM, oh, we call that AM or the morning shift, and seven PM to seven AM for the night shift. While the procedural areas like for example, operating room, our outpatient department, utilize both a combination of eight and twelve-hour shift. So in addition, we also comply with the eight-hour shift as mandated by the Civil Service Commission MC Number Twenty-One as of June twenty-four nineteen ninety-one. So based on our study, these are the recommendations or the beneficial effects of the twelve-hour shift. Number one, for patient care, better continuity of care for patients, so fewer patient handoff or handovers or endorsement within the twelve-hour. So it reduces the potential of loss of communication, of information among team members, thus errors could arise as a result. Number two, it, it, uh, uh, there is uninterrupted flow because a twelve-hour nursing shift runs more efficiently when the nursing team develops consistent uninterrupted rhythm. And of course, there is better patient engagement because we stay along with the patient. For the nursing personnel, these are their comments, more days off. Since you go on duty on AM for the first day or seven AM to seven PM second day, seven PM to seven AM, then you will have your two days off afterwards. So nurses on twelve-hour shift typically work three to four days a week. So these two-day gap allowance allows them to recharge, to spend more time with their family, with their friends, do voluntary works, creating a better work-life balance and improve morale. Second, of course, we all know that especially Metro Manila, traffic is a buzzword. This is normal day-to-day activity. There will be less commuting, fewer scheduled days means less time on the road, whether nurses get to work by car or public transport. Second, third is about public transport access. With a twelve-hour shift, the time of ingress and egress from work have better accessibility in getting public transportation services unlike with the eight-hour shift, for example, seven AM to three PM or three PM to eleven PM or two PM to ten PM and eleven PM to seven EM. And there's a perceived difficulty in getting transport with, during the mid-shift. Next is safety of the employee incoming to and from work. Staff would not be reporting for work during VR since duty schedule is from seven AM to seven PM for the morning and seven PM to seven AM for the night shift. Next is personnel and professional career advancement. During days off, the personnel can recharge, be more productive by learning new skills, invest in the future by taking short courses or enroll in post-grad studies. Next is they build network during days off. They can attend professional networks or events connecting with a people. Uh, sleep pattern with a master rotation plan that's AP or AM night shift of, of less disruption in a synchronous relationship between the body's internal clock and the environment. And of course, there will be longer breaks. For twelve-hour shift, we spend ah, three, two breaks, morning and the afternoon. For the institution, our reduced manpower, long shifts appeared as a solution at a moment where in nursing staff was in high demand but in short supply by reducing the rotation from three to two shifts per twenty-four hours. And of course, reduce cost with reduced personal reporting for work. Institution pays less for cost of water, electricity and the like. So based on the study, we favor the utilization, utilization of the twelve-hour shift as the benefits outweigh the drawbacks. But we appreciate the introduction of House Bill Number One Nine Seven Eight and with the short title, Care for the Nurses Welfare Act. Because it means that the honorable members of the Congress value and appreciate the work of the nurses. So nursing leaders must take appropriate controls such as implementing the policies in case we go into twelve-hour shift, uh, address the, like, the needs of the institution. However, it is also recommended that flexibility and working hours of the nurses can be adapted based on the area of assignment. Of course, consider the workforce demographics. And third is review of the staffing ratio and adaptation of the World Health Organization workload indicators of staffing needs or the WISEN to ensure a safe staffing pattern. I know, I'm also working with the DOH regarding the review of the staffing pattern. Right now, the standard nursing pattern is one is to twelve. But in the Philippine Heart Center, we base our staffing pattern based on the quality of care. For example, for adult patients for level one or those needing less care, uh, one nurse for eight patients. For pediatric patients or children, one is to six patients. And for critical care for level three, one is to two or one is to three. But for level four, we need two nurses for one patient. But of course, it entails cost and um, needs the support of the institution in the government. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Doktora Galang, for your study. I have a personal question. Do you have a recent study? I've heard you've done that study past twenty sixteen? Wala bang bago? Kasi nag-COVID day, baka iba na 'yung utak nung, iba na 'yung ano ng nurses natin, 'yung gaweh.
Yes, sir. Yes, my, uh, Mister Chair, we conducted the study in twenty sixteen, but right now, we utilized by pilot the WHO WISEN indicator in computing for our staff. And based on this, that for the record, nursing care, a nurse needs ten hours to care for that particular patient, especially this is a cardiovascular patient. And there are indirect nursing care. For example, they need to talk with the doctors, they need to check the equipment, they need to relay laboratory results and to discuss other matters with other members of the team.
Thank you. That, we'll take note that's coming from a highly specialized institution. Thank you for your insight. Moving on, I'd like to hear from the National Children's Hospital, Mister Mizram Mateo.
Good morning, Mister Chair, members of the committee and all resource persons. I am Izrae Mateo, a nurse four po from the National Children's Hospital as representative of Doctor Maria Lenorgi Pasol, our chief nurse po. So National Children's Hospital po is a specialty hospital din po, caring for pediatric patients zero to eighteen years old with a two hundred fifty bed capacity. So the, our position po, the Care for Nurses Welfare Act aims to enhance the rights and welfare of nurses by regulating and limiting their consecutive work hours. However, we must also explore the flexible shift hours. While the act limits work hours to eight consecutive hours, many healthcare facilities like Heart Center and also National Children's Hospital operate on twelve-hour shifts due to various benefits as mentioned by Mam Galang, including fewer shift transitions which reduce the number of shift changes that can lead to better continuity of care and fewer communication errors. Improve work-life balance. Nurses often prefer twelve-hour shift as they provide more consecutive days offs which can also enhance work-life balance po. Staffing efficiency, twelve-hour shifts can simplify scheduling and reduce the need for contractual for job orders. However, the twelve-hour shifts can also lead to increased fatigue and burnout if not managed properly. Therefore, it is crucial to implement measures such as adequate rest, rest periods, proper staffing ratios and supportive working environments which also includes proper compensation to mitigate this risk. Regarding staffing, staffing ratios are a critical component in ensuring nurse welfare and patient safety. The act should consider mandating the minimum staffing ratios to prevent overburdening nurses and compromising care quality. Key points, this includes improved patient outcomes. Adequate staffing ratios have been linked to lower patient mortality rates, reduce incidences of medical errors and better overall patient outcomes. Also, reduce nurse burnout. Proper staffing levels can also help distribute the workload more evenly, reducing stress and burnout among nurses. It also enhances job satisfaction. Nurses working in a well-staffed environments report higher job satisfaction and are more likely to remain in their positions, reducing the turnover rates. So we recommend flexibility in shift lengths. Amend the act to allow for flexibility in shift lengths including the twelve-hour shifts, provided that adequate measures are in place to ensure nurse well-being and patient safety. Mandatory staffing ratios include provisions for mandatory minimum staffing ratios to ensure that nurses are not overburdened and that patient care is not compromised. And a supportive working environment. Encourage healthcare employers to create a supportive working environments that include adequate rest periods, opportunities for professional development and mechanisms to address nurse fatigue and burnout. So in conclusion, that the Care for Nurses Welfare Act is a significant step towards improving the working conditions of nurses. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you so much for your candid observation. I'd like to take note of that. Next would be from the Professional Regulatory Commission. Let us hear from Dr. LCT.
Good morning, Mister Chair. Good morning to the august body in this room this morning. The Professional Regulatory Board of Nursing fully supports The Professional Regulatory Board of Nursing fully supports House Bill Number Nineteen Seventy-Eight entitled "An Act Promoting the Rights and Welfare of Nurses by Regulating and Limiting Their Consecutive Work Hours." And this one is presented by or authored by Representative Patrick Michael Vargas. So actually, there are a number of researchers comparing the eight-hour and twelve-hour shifts. And so therefore, if you notice, the ones who presented first were, uh, in in deference of the eight-hour shift, like for instance, our, uh, doctor here, and also, uh, difference between what was presented by our ANSAP uh, representative, Dr. Omar, and also Dr. Galang from the Philippine Heart Center. So, uh, I would say that actually the eight-hour shift is better. So I, I, I mentioned that we support that in the Professional Regulatory Board of Nursing. If we have the eight-hour shift, that means to say then that the nurse can go home earlier and can take care of the children, can take care of the family, can cook healthy food for the family and can still have daily exercise for that matter. And if that one is on the other side, the twelve-hour shift, that means to say that if he is she or he is on a seven-to-seven shift, he isn't going to be there during the whole day, whole day or the whole night. So what kind of work-life balance will that be? So if we talk about work-life balance, I think that it is better that we have the eight-hour shift, okay? And of course, we talk about less fatigue by the nurses if we have the eight-hour shift. If you go on a twelve-hour shift, kanina sinabi ni sir, ah, si ikaw ba yun sir, 'yung five hours lang, ano na, uh, fatigue na, no? So how much more if you add to that seven hours? Actually, I had been, uh, uh, staff nurse also. And after the eight-hour shift, that one is very fatiguing already. And what does fatigue mean? If you work twelve-hour shift, towards the end of the shift, that means to say that you are very tired. Perhaps you cannot think properly. And so therefore, if you cannot think properly, that means to say that you are prone to errors. And what will that mean on patient outcomes? So that will impact negatively on patient outcomes. So, uh, patients, because of the nurses' errors, no, may may have adverse events which can prolong hospitalization or perhaps end their lives, no, simbako, okay? So on the part of the nurses, safety of the nurses, if we, if the nurse have more rest, then that means to say that the mental health is going to be preserved and also there is less depression. We're talking about that a little while ago. And also, these nurses are going to be less stressed. And we know that stress cause a lot of illnesses, including asthma, including cancers, no, including a lot of illnesses. So we will be taking care of our nurses better if the nurses are going to go on eight-hour shift. And, uh, yeah, I was talking about the work-life balance. I would like to share to you our, the result of our inspection and monitoring. This is an initiative by the Professional Regulatory Boards. All the boards have the initiative of inspecting, inspecting establishments. So in our setting or in our, yeah, we inspect hospitals and even higher education institutions. When we inspected hospitals, that can be virtual or physical. And when we, we inspected one more, no, one, two, three or more hospitals, we found out that certain hospitals pay nurses seven thousand five hundred monthly or six thousand monthly, and that is a payment or a salary of a maid, a helper in the house. So, uh, I, I would, uh, request that DOLE would look into this or perhaps, I don't know, what what the Congress can help about this one, that there is not even a minimum salary for the nurses. And, uh, I'm talking about even nurses in the north and some nurses in the south, meaning in Mindanao, okay? So also talking about that twelve-hour shift, there is or it is not commensurate that there is an exchange of duty only. Uh, when the nurse go on twelve-hour shift, after eight hours supposedly, she gets a thirty percent already, uh, OT, overtime pay. But that is not what is happening, no? Um, and, uh, nurses must know that they are not commensurate and must not allow it because that one is oppressive to the nurses, okay? And, uh, talking about the staffing ratio, tama 'yung sinasabi po ng taga ANSAP na at saka si Mam Galang, na kailangan iconsider 'yung equity. But actually, koconsider mo rin 'yung kind of facility that you are in. If you are in a premier facility, then of course, one is to twelve will not suffice. In fact, one is to four perhaps, six is so much already, not too much already for a premier facility. So, uh, the one is to twelve is for general wards, for general wards. But for the ICU, uh, the DOH, if I'm not mistaken, Doctora, that's one is to two to three. Yes, one, yes, one is to three. So also that one is, uh, that equity is also considered in that instance, no? But, uh, in not all instances will these be followed. So it is, uh, advised that there is better engagement by the Department of Health or by DOLE in certain instances. Okay, so, uh, Mr. Chair, a position paper will be submitted to you. Thank you very much.
I would like to receive your position paper and, uh, very insightful, uh, comments. Thank you. At this point, having heard all your, uh, opinions and and positions, I may now at this point here from our members, Honorable Ron Salo.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. At the outset, Mr. Chair, allow me first to commend all our nurses. Congratulations po sa inyo. Thank you very much for caring for people. Actually, Mr. Chair, uh, I respectfully note, based on my travels also uh, in other countries, particularly meeting our OFWs. Nung pumunta po ako sa Libya, isa lang pang pakiusap po talaga ng government po ng Libya. Magpadala po ng mas maray pang nurses po sa kanila because they love the way our nurses care for them. The same with the UK, the same with Abu Dhabi. I went to the Abu Dhabi, uh, Libland Clinic, Abu Dhabi. It's so huge, a facility, health facility. And their primary requests is for us to have more nurses, Philippine nurses to work there because they understand how much our our nurses care for the patients. So part po ng culture po natin, 'yung tatag po natin, a culture of care. We care and we serve the patients. But at the same time, that said, ang kinalulungkot ko lang po, actually, napansin ko pag nasa labas, uh, 'yung pag-care po natin sa mga patients, lumalabas po talaga. Eh, siguro part ng culture po natin. Ang medyo concern ko lang po, dun sa mga naririsip ko naman po ng mga experiences na mga kabayan po natin, when they go to public hospitals here. Kasi they feel that they're not properly being treated as patients, which I feel so bad actually. Kasi sabi ko nga, bakit ganon? Kapag we're caring outside, uh, lumalabas 'yung pagiging caring po natin as a, as a people. Pero when we're caring for our own people, mukhang hindi lumalabas 'yung pag-aaruga na meron po tayo. So I suppose it's part of these particular things that we're discussing. Siguro pumapasok po dun sa kabuan na kailangan po natin na pangalagaan din po talaga 'yung mga nurses po natin. The same time, habang tinitingnan po natin ito, while it's True Care for Nurses Welfare Act, I co- I agree with some of the comments. It may be limiting. It's just looking at one certain aspect. Baka nga mas malaga 'yung binapanggit po ng maray po sa mga, uh, resource persons po natin. Para lumabas din po talaga 'yung pagiging caring po natin as a people, particularly with our patients. Baka kailangan iconsider ah 'yung kabuan, 'yung marami na sa mga items na nagiging rason kung bakit hindi po nila nailalabas o naibibigay 'yung tamang pag-aruga dun sa mga pasyente po nila. The same time, experienced din ko mismo sa isang, uh, private hospital naman. Natuwa talaga ako dahil 'yung nurse po dun, she was so caring. Pati 'yung iinumin po ng pasyente, pati 'yung ano, lahat talagang inaalalayan 'yung pasyente. Kaya lang, medyo mag-iisip ka, kasi pag compare mo dun sa experience, dun sa uh, satisfaction na naririsip nung isang pasyente dun sa isang private, dun sa public, masyadong malayo. Kaya siguro kailangan po natin dun tingnan, uh, Mr. Chair, mas komprehensibo. Kaya, I suppose, hindi po siguro makakasapat na narinig lang po natin 'yung kailangang ma-komento ngayong umaga pong ito, Mr. Chair. Siguro 'yung committee should consider in studying really and taking the specific comments in order to make sure that this particular proposed measure that we're discussing, mas maging komprehensibo po 'yung approach. Kasi tama rin po, uh, while it's true na we care for the caregivers, we also need to look at the point of view of the patients. Kasi kung istriktto at tinitingnan ko po 'yung mga exemptions po rito, na hindi na po pwede na mag-extend beyond the eight-hour requirement, iba ka naman ma-compromise naman po 'yung, uh, patient care. So kailangan po na mas balanse po 'yung pagtasap po natin, Mr. Chair. Maraming salamat po, and I hope the committee will consider really the comments made and to make sure that these particular comments will be, uh, perhaps, uh, placed in a more comprehensive proposed measure that we will consider in this committee. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Ron Salo, for your very comprehensive, uh, comment. I'd like to hear also from one of our member, Honorable Hernandez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, given all these, uh, positions and recommendations, um, I couldn't emphasize more enough the, uh, the need for a bill like this. And this is a, this is a development, uh, this bill. But, uh, we also recognize the need to have it more comprehensive, um, to, uh, that we can, uh, study it more carefully, smoothen, you know, at idagdag pa 'yung mga kulang pa. And we were talking about the need of having a comprehensive bill for our nurses, private or public. Um, the thing is, there are, there are issues that, uh, this committee can't, um, it's not, uh, it's, it's not on the jurisdiction of this committee, um, especially with regards, uh, the hours, the pay, uh, and all that. And, and so we, I, I, I am recommending and I am, um, um, doing myself to participate that we make either a separate bill for these recommendations and then we, uh, improve, uh, I expect natin 'yung mga bill at it, include natin 'yung mga recommendations nila because really need to take care of the people who take care of us, especially sa mga facilities natin. Um, but we hear you and, uh, we are sorry, we are apologizing. But this is, um, this is us and this is a big development. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for again considering this significant bill. And in behalf of this, of this your representation, we will push for the passing of the bill that would really benefit the nurses, that just, um, uh, hindi lang pangpronta, hindi lang sa ngusok, hindi sa puso. Maraming salamat po.
Thank you, Honorable Charisse Ann Hernandez. Um, may we hear from Honorable Angelica Natasha Ko.
Maganda umaga po sa inyong lahat. Uh, siguro katulad ng mga nurses natin, ang mga barangay health workers, which I am representing, so I totally get it, no? Uh, napakalaki po ng binibigay na, um, trabaho o kaya ng compassion ng ating mga nurses sa ating mga pasyenteng mga Pilipino. Pero 'yung compensation ay, uh, hindi na ibibigay. And as I always say kanina, uh, well, before, no, as I always say, papaano natin, ma- maibibigay 'yung one hundred percent natin kung hindi natin, naibibigay sa sarili muna natin. So I, I hear you, uh, our nurses, uh, hindi lang, I, I think, in fact, 'yung, 'yung heya natin, di pa nga ata, one hundred percent narirelease sa ating mga nurses. Parehas din po sa mga barangay health workers na ipinaglalaba natin. At isa po ang inyong representative sa mga naging author ng health emergency allowances. And so I think, um, marami po, maraming problema sa, uh, nurses, sa mga barangay health workers na napaka pareho, no? Uh, we always put it side by side kasi po sa, sa mga barangay, there are also the, the barangay health workers who, who help out, no? But, uh, that's what we see. Uh, kaya po, naiintindihan ko 'yung kalagayan ng ating mga nurses dito sa ating bansa. And although, uh, napakagandang pakinggan, nung kagaya na sinabi ni Kong Ron Salo na abroad, pinagmamalaki din talaga natin ang ating mga nurses because of the stories that we hear. But dito sa ating bansa, papaano naman 'yung ating mga nurses na siya mismong nangangalaga sa ating mga nandito naman? So, um, I think what we can promise you from the committee is that we will really study this. Siyempre ayaw natin bum- magbitaw ng salita na hindi tayo sigurado at hindi po, uh, scientific ang ating pag-iisip. Uh, maganda na, uh, kung hindi, kung hindi man ma-compensate in terms of, uh, sweldo, hindi man ma-compensate in terms of, uh, work-life balance. Eh, may maibigay po ang, ang committing ito para po sa ating mga bayani na mga nurses rin po. At, uh, gusto ko rin pong magpasalamat sa lahat ng ating mga nurses for the work that you've done during COVID. So again, maraming, maraming salamat po. And Chairman, thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Chair, Honorable Angelica Natasha Ko. Truly, this committee really worked hard diligently. All your inputs will not be wasted. So, uh, at this point, having discussed thoroughly the, the issues under this bill.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, I, Honorable, Honorable, sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It has, uh, the chair would like to acknowledge Honorable Salvador Plato.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Maganda umaga po sa mga colleague here and our guest, them guests. Kasi 'yung last July thirty, tenacity, our comsec, nung chair, dito po nung atsche chairman, Gato, nagtanong ko 'yung committee on health inquiry, 'yung na, in it, 'yung implementation ng National Human Resources for Health Master Plan. Mahiningi akong data, check, nakapagsubmit pa sila, si Doctor Galang ba? Uh, yeah, Gloria Yang? 'Yung data actually affected the contract of service mga GO on the implementation of Mandana's ruling. Saka 'yung mga assistance and DOH na magagawa natin para sa mga GO at sa mga contract of service. Nagsubmit, may submit pa tayo?
Um, DOH will shall answer it?
At that time po, uh, DOH is, uh, under ke Doctora Banson. She says she will submit po. So kasi siyang in charge po dun sa information na yon, but she says she will submit.
Si Doctor Banson yata, ano dito nun? Anyway, uh, reiterate po lang, Mr. Chair, ating comsec, pagka-submit lang, ano po? Meron akong nanotice, uh, Mr. Chair, dito sa, I notice in section five, there is no prohibition against voluntary overtime. Itong bill ni ano, Congressman Vargas, is it advisable to include maximum overtime hours? Kung wala pong kaso itong limit, hindi mo ba parang baliwala ang paglalagay natin ng prohibition of excessive work hours? Ang mangyayari lamang ay mas palaking sweldo, but the reason for this bill will be defeated. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Salvador Plato, for your comment and questions. I was assured we will take note of that. Uh, will it to be part, parcel of our further study on this, uh, bill. Honorable Salo?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Having heard, Mr. Chair, all the comments of our resource persons as well as some of our members with respect to this proposed measure. And we understand that, of course, uh, most of the comments, uh, of the resource persons or inputs pertains to inclusion of certain items to make sure that the proposed measure will be more comprehensive. I move, Mr. Chair, that the committee secretariat will conduct consultation meetings with the stakeholders to make sure that the proposed measure will be improved, will be enhanced, and to make sure that the concerns will really be addressed. So move, Mr. Chair.
At this point, I'd like to request. At this point, I'd like to request Honorable Natasha Ko for, I'd like to relinquish the chair,